Good evening. I call this July 22, 2025, meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Councilmember Rabadi has let us know that she'll be absent this evening. Thank you to those watching here in person with us tonight, those watching via livestream, and those who are watching recording of this meeting. Our town mission statement, which helps guide our decisions tonight and into the future, is connecting our diverse community to an enhanced quality of life through innovative programs and services. Sergeant Penellas, our sergeant-at-arms for this evening's meeting, we thank you for your attendance. This evening, Councilmember Rao will be leading our invocation.
Thank you. As we bow our heads in prayer, eternal God, we come before you today with gratitude in our hearts and purpose in our souls. We gather not just as citizens but as caretakers of our fragile democracy, one that has been shape-tested and renewed by the courage of those who dared, as the late John Lewis reminded us, to get in good trouble, necessary trouble. Last week, our nation honored the spirit of Congressman Lewis, the son of sharecroppers, disciple of nonviolence, warrior for justice. May his words echo in our hearts. Democracy is not a state, it is an act. Let us never forget that every step he took across the Edmund Pettus Bridge was a prayer in motion, a sermon of sacrifice, and a declaration that the arc of the moral universe only bends when we pull it with all our might. We ask that you bless this council meeting this evening. Let these good travel rallies remind us that voting is sacred, that truth matters, and that our nation only works when it works for all of us. Strengthen us to rise above division, to speak out against injustice, and to protect the right to vote like our future depends on it, because it does. Bless the organizers, leaders, and every citizen here willing to stand in the fight for democracy and live up to its promise. And may we leave this place not only inspired but committed to speak louder, act bolder, and love deeper until justice rolls down like waters and righteousness like a mighty stream. Finally, this evening, we pray for any family who has lost a loved one. In particular, in our own Morrisville family, we pray for the family of Liz Johnson, who lost her aunt this week, and to the former Wake County Commissioner, John Burns, a friend to many of us, who just lost his father. We pray for our troops wherever they may be. We pray for a wonderful meeting this evening. Amen.
All of our elders, stand to the right of the legions.
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd like to apologize. Our sergeant-at-arms this evening is Alexis Johnson. I was just reading right off my script instead of actually looking up, so thank you for being here. Before we adopt tonight's agenda, town council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Does anyone have any such conflicts they'd like to share? Okay. Staff has requested a closed session to be added for economic development, so I'd entertain a motion to include that case, to adopt this evening's agenda.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve this evening's agenda as adding a closed session to discuss economic development matters.
No.
Okay. You want some discussion?
You were also going to ask about consent agenda and, you know, moving things around. Before we fully approve the agenda, could we...
I thought you just wanted to pull that during consent.
Yes.
That's generally how we do that, but...
I mean, could we do that at a certain time in the meeting?
We do.
Could we talk about that?
Generally, when we pull something off consent, we approve the remaining consent, and then we address that issue right then, and then we approve it or not at that time. Would that be acceptable to you, Councilmember Schardt-Johnson?
Well, I had wanted to talk about it later in the meeting and therefore changing the agenda, but I guess we could pull it out after we approved consent. But I'd like to pull it out.
That sounds good. Okay. Happy to do that at the time.
The one item, six H.
Okay. That sounds great. I have a motion from Councilmember Rao to adopt this evening's agenda with the addition of a closed session for economic development. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second from Councilmember Johnson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing not that carries unanimously, six zero. There are nine items on this evening's consent agenda. I will read them out. June town council meeting minutes approval, resolution adopting a town of Morrisville by local policy, resolution town center district branding, wayfinding, and signage master plan, resolution to amend term appointments for PZB members, resolution to approve advisory committee summer appointments, resolution appointing Red Grasso and Gerard Woblaszki to the firefighter relief fund board, resolution authorizing purchase of two fire department engines, resolution for the financing of the acquisition of a public works facility at 125 International Drive, and the execution and delivery of the connected trust documents, 2025 July budget ordinance amendment. I think nine might be a record for us, perhaps. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Schardt-Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to pull the item six H, resolution for the financing of the acquisition of a public works facility at 125 International Drive and the execution and delivery of the connected trust documents.
Okay.
For discussion.
I would entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda minus that one item.
I'll make that motion. Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Johnson, a second from Councilmember Schardt-Johnson. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, less that one item, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing not that carries unanimously. And who is responsible for six H? That would be Byron Hayes, chief financial officer. If you'll please approach the mic.
Hey, getting me, Mayor, council. Available for any questions.
So I have a couple comments and a question, if I may. This particular resolution is about financing of the acquisition of a public works facility. This public works opportunity was first discussed at the January retreat in 2025. The current capital improvement plan had stated that an existing town property alongside Aviation Parkway was to house the future facility for public works. And at that time, the estimate after 60% of the design was the facility would exceed $30 million. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
At that time, I questioned the continued increase in funds, and it was determined that there was challenges with the design on the existing location due to the environmental concerns as well as other code requirements that were needed, at which time the town council then discussed innovation in the sense that we would look for another site that would possibly be existing, meet the needs, and also be located in the town. And our high-quality team of staff found a suitable site, which is not $30 million in total. It is much, much lower. Looks like we're financing $10 million.
Correct. It's $10 million for the acquisition of the property and then another about $10 million for renovation. This particular item allows us to not to exceed $22 million in total. What about this? Can I have a...
Sorry about that. This item allows us to not to exceed $22 million for both the acquisition as well as the renovation of the property. So about $8 million less than the number you stated a second ago.
So we could... So that's the maximum that we would be spending on this project, and we also retain the current property that we own along Aviation for future use.
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
And the associated project that Wake County Recycling Center expansion will still be feasible for Wake County and still have a service to not only Morrisville but Wake County residents.
I believe so. Is that correct?
Okay, great. It sounds like a win-win.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to take a moment to kind of clarify some of the assumptions as to, you know, how we arrived at $10 million. The $10 million is for the acquisition. It is not the full cost of the entire project, but yet it is a significant cost savings in a yet future unknown. I mean, it was $30 million in January with the materials and labor could have exceeded that, so we are kind of capping that.
That's great.
Very good. That's all of my questions. Thank you to yourself and the team for making this possible, because this is a great improvement for our public works team and the entire town.
Thank you.
Did anyone else have any questions for Mr. Hayes? Okay. In that case, I would entertain a motion for six H, the resolution for the financing of the acquisition of a public work facility at 125 International Drive, and the execution and delivery of the connected trust documents.
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second.
A motion from Councilmember Schardt-Johnson, a second from Councilmember Johnson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. That carries six zero unanimously. Moving on, next on our agenda is proclamations. We will have no proclamations actually read during the meeting tonight, and there are other proclamations acknowledged by council included for reference on our agenda, and that is proclamation recognizing Smorrisville Day. Please join us August 9 from 4 till 6 p.m. at Morrisville, Smorrisville Community Park for that great fun event. Next on the agenda is Morrisville Speaks Public Comment. Town Clerk Bertling, is anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Just to digest the new setup, we do have one member of the public signed up to speak, and that's Bill Dukowitz.
Okay. If you would please approach the microphone and stand when your name is called, and we have a different setup, so as you see, we're right in the middle there. Please begin by stating your name and residential address and direct your comments to the council. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes to ensure everyone has a fair opportunity to share their thoughts. The timing will start after you state your name and address, and a buzzer will sound when your time is up. We appreciate your cooperation in helping us manage time fairly for all participants. Sir?
Good evening. My name is Bill Dukowitz, and I live at 1112 Justice Walker Avenue in Morrisville. I'm a Vietnam veteran, a member of VFW Post 7383 and American Legion Post 67, and active in veteran affairs for over 50 years. I'm also a former Foundation Board Member until I was purged for opposing the town's design. Let me add, it was a violation of the bylaws, but the Foundation routinely ignores their IRS bylaws. The town paid for a bad conceptual design and is now forcing the Foundation to use it, despite the Foundation's bylaws requiring a board vote, which never happened. The Foundation is supposed to be independent, but it violates MOU and operates in secrecy. The town turns a blind eye. Veterans understand the Foundation's mission. The mission is partnering with the town. The Foundation plans to force the conceptual design purchased by the town council on the community without review or proper vote. There's a large veterans community in Morrisville, and we follow this project closely. In 2017, the town manager visited our VFW post. We used to receive updates. Now veterans are isolated and shut out of the process. Veterans don't even know what's in the design. No one knows who's on the board. For years, we've raised serious concerns, but the town always sides with the Foundation it created while ignoring IRS rules, its own charter, and basic accountability. This isn't just a design problem, it's a serious governance issue facing the town. It's time for the town council, staff, and Foundation to sit down with veterans and finally listen. Veterans are not outsiders. We are partners in this community. Treat us with the respect we've earned. If the town is truly committed to honoring its veterans, then work with us, not around us, to build an environmentally sensitive memorial, fully maintained by the community, with no taxpayer burden. It will be a memorial the entire community can be proud of. I'm done.
Thank you. Town Clerk Bertling, is there anyone else signed up?
We have one more individual signed up, and that is Jashi Aberdasham.
Okay. If you please approach the microphone, state your name and residential address for the record.
Oh, was this for the public?
Yes.
I thought that was an infantry. Oh, okay.
Okay.
In the future, definitely I'll come up and speak to you.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to address this body for up to three minutes on any topic of your choosing? Sir, if you could please name and residential address for the record, and then afterwards, please see the town clerk to fill out the form.
My name is Bob Butler, 112 Lee Croft Way. I am chairman of the Morrisville Veterans Memorial Foundation. And what you just heard prior to this, first of all, the person who said that he was against the plan when he was on the Foundation, he voted for the plan. So any kind of... He doesn't have a lot of veracity, so that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Was there anyone else in the room who'd like to address this body? Okay. Thank you very much. As a reminder, we encourage the submission of written comments via email at publicinput@morrisvillnc.gov as they offer a valuable way for community members to share feedback. And as always, second and fourth Tuesdays, we welcome public comment in person. We are now at item 10, administrative reports. They are provided for information only. Does council have any specific questions regarding the administrative reports? And this is the Morrisville Grants Program Update. Okay. We have... Council would like to say good job to Don Rab and the team. We have one presentation scheduled for this evening. We now invite Brett Martin, Transportation Project Manager, to the podium.
Can you hear me?
Yes, all right. Thank you and good evening, Mayor Colley, and members of the council. I am Brett Martin, Transportation Program Manager or Project Manager with the town, and I am here to provide you with a progress update on the town of Morrisville's Transportation Safety Action Plan, which commenced earlier this year in the winter. I would also like to ask that we hold any questions until the end, because, well, we have some questions of you that we'll also pose at the end. All right. So moving on here, to provide an agenda for what I will cover, I will start with some background and contextual information for how the development of this plan came about, including our funding partners to support it and our general approach to the plan, the purpose of the plan, and its scope of work and schedule. I will then cover some elements of the plan that have been completed to date, including our safety data analysis, identification of transportation safety deficiencies, goal-setting, and public outreach and engagement, including feedback received therefrom, and then I will touch on our next steps for further plan development. Okay. So let's start with some background on the Safety Action Plan, and we'll kick this off with how this plan is funded, the partners with whom we have collaborated and continue to collaborate to complete it, the expectations of those partners for the plan, and the general approach to and purpose of the plan. So funding was awarded back in 2023 to the Central Pines Regional Council by the U.S. Department of Transportation through its Safe Streets for All program for Central Pines to provide tools for communities in the region to engage in planning around the topic of roadway safety. And as part of this effort, Central Pines is working with a variety of local governments in the region, including the town of Morrisville, to develop pilot case transportation safety action plans as well as other regionally-serving activities to better position communities for roadway safety planning, and has contracted with VHB as the consultant to complete it. The development of Morrisville's Safety Action Plan is meant to serve as a pilot or template for suburban communities in the region to follow in the future. In 2024, the town and Central Pines executed a memorandum of understanding to complete Morrisville's plan, with the town agreeing to contribute $13,000 toward the local match for the $250,000 US DOT grant. One thing that is very important to note about the Safety Action Plan is in order for it to be officially considered a Safety Action Plan that establishes a local government for standing to apply for actual project implementation grants, it must be completed in accordance with federal Safe Streets for All standards, meaning there are required elements for the plan, and the overall approach applied to the plan should be through what is known as the Safe Systems Approach lens, which is summarized in the graphic to the left. The overall purpose of the plan is to identify safety deficiencies and outline an approach for implementing projects and strategies to reduce serious injury and fatal crashes on the town's roadways. In procedural terms, as I just mentioned, the plan renders the town eligible for federal implementation grants to actually implement projects or strategies included in the plan, and for our own purposes, the town... or sorry, the plan will also inform the transportation safety aspects of the town's comprehensive transportation plan update, which just kicked off, and you will be hearing more about over the coming 15 to 18 months. Okay. So you may have heard about or be familiar with the Campo Blueprint for Safety, which has... was just adopted by the Campo Executive Board in June. So I would like to take a moment to explain the relationship of Morrisville's plan to the Blueprint for Safety. The Campo Blueprint for Safety is a region-wide safety action plan covering the entirety of Campo's planning area, including all of Wake County and portions of several other counties, and it was driven by broader regional transportation safety goals. As a result, the net cast for its public and stakeholder outreach and engagement to solicit input was very broad geographically and was representative of a regional focus rather than a more local focus. The Blueprint for Safety developed very broad, regionally-serving strategies and actions to facilitate safety improvements, and defers to local safety plans to prioritize improvements and select countermeasures to address deficiencies, but it does provide a toolkit for local governments to use for their own implementation efforts. The Morrisville plan is town-specific. It is driven by community-level goals, and it is to be informed by community-level outreach and engagement. It will identify location-specific safety deficiencies and consideration of countermeasures in Morrisville specifically, and the prioritization of improvements will be town-specific. Okay. So what are the federally required elements of the Safety Action Plan? I won't go into a lot of depth on each of these, but they include leadership commitment and goal-setting focused on a commitment to an eventual goal of zero roadway fatalities and serious injuries, safety data analyses focused on an examination of fatal and serious injury crashes, including their locations, severity, crash types, and contributing factors, and an evaluation of proactive systemic and specific safety needs through a risk lens, and engagement and collaboration to collect and use public and stakeholder feedback to inform the plan. Further, they include a policy review focused on assessing current policies, plans, et cetera, to identify opportunities to improve on our prioritization of transportation safety and any corresponding consideration of adoption of revised policies, plans, et cetera. Strategy and project development focused on developing projects and strategies to address the safety problems identified that are prioritized and organized into an implementation timeline, and progress and transparency, which comes after plan adoption, and focuses on measuring progress toward plan implementation over time. And our plan development schedule displayed here puts how we are addressing these required elements into a logical sequential order. We began work on the safety data analysis back in February to determine where the town currently stands with respect to fatal and serious injury crashes before we began considering a goal to address reductions for those crashes heading into the spring. We carried out our first public outreach and engagement effort in June, which I will talk more about later, and we are currently at the policy review stage of the plan development process, which should be finished up this month. All of this leads to our development of projects and strategies for improving identified safety deficiencies, which is the last step before the plan will be packaged up for consideration of adoption by the council in September. Okay. So in terms of progress update and findings, now we will move on to the safety data analysis component of the plan, which included a roadway crash analysis and a risk analysis. And we will start with some background on how the crash analysis was done and what we evaluated with respect to crashes. And to do this, crashes have... that have been reported and recorded are separated by crash type, and it is important to note that a single crash can involve more than one crash type. At a larger regional scale with more data, such as the Campo Blueprint for Safety, scale of analysis, the analysis focuses on what are called emphasis areas for conditions, patterns, or factors that exhibit higher crash frequencies. However, at the smaller community scales, such as for Morrisville and for this plan, the analysis focuses on specific physical crash typologies, such as, for example, angle crashes or rear-end crashes, that sort of thing. The purpose of the analysis is to highlight crash types and their locations where there is overrepresentation of fatal and serious injury crashes compared to the proportion of all crashes. Moving on to the risk analysis component of our overall safety data analysis effort, this looks at crash and safety risk both in light of and irrespective of what our crash history tells us. And in doing so, it looks at crash likelihood, or what severe crashes are more likely and where, context and exposure, or where traffic volumes might impact crash frequency, and where different modal roadway users are most often come into conflict, and severity, or generally where speed results in greater risk of injury and where speed needs to be managed. All right. So now we will dig into our crash analysis for Morrisville, and for this, we pulled crash data for a period spanning from 2016 through 2023, which is the most recent year available for which NC DOT maintains this data. During this timeframe, there was a total of 4,569 crashes in Morrisville. Seven of those crashes involved fatalities, and nine involved serious injuries, for a total of 16 total crashes that involve fatalities and serious injuries. If we look at the temporal history for this, in most years covered by this analysis, there was either no fatalities, or there was no more than one. However, 2021 was a particularly bad year for fatal crashes in Morrisville, which, to an extent, unfortunately dovetails with what we have seen from many other geographies, primarily because of more aggressive and speedier driving during and coming out of the pandemic. Traffic and congestion can actually be a speed and fatality crash deterrent. There is also some crash type information provided on this slide, and we'll dig into this more on the next slide, but I thought it would be helpful to point out that most ... that the most common crash types are rear-end and left-turn crashes. So digging into the crash types in more detail, in terms of those crash types that have an overrepresentation of fatalities and serious injuries, the biggest culprits here are angle crashes, crashes in which a vehicle ran off the road, and crashes involving a vulnerable road user, so a pedestrian, bicyclist, or motorcyclist. While a number of Morrisville's crashes that involved fatalities and serious injuries during the noted span were rear-end and left-turn crashes, there is not an overrepresentation of fatalities and serious injuries for those crash types compared to their overall proportion of crashes. So that is our evaluation of crash types, but where on our roadway network have we had a higher frequency of fatal and serious injury crashes relative to other places, segments, or corridors? This was evaluated using a measurement of roadway segments with a higher frequency of crashes weighted by crash severity, and is consistent with the methodology used for the Campo Blueprint for Safety. The resulting identified trouble areas constitute what is called the High Injury Network in the federal Safe Streets for All lingo realm. It is important to note that with a smaller dataset for roadway segments with which to work in a smaller geographic area, there isn't as much categorical separation among the various roadway segments evaluated, and the measurement is very sensitive to fatal crash events. However, what this reveals is segments of NC 54, McCrimmon Parkway, Morrisville Parkway, Morrisville Carpenter Road, Aviation Parkway, and Airport Boulevard near I-40 comprise the town's high-injury network. While all of these roadway segments qualify for town-specific high-injury network, only Airport Boulevard near I-40 is also on the Campo High Injury Network, which helps us understand how competitive these roadway segments are in terms of crash frequency and severity when we adjust it at the regional scale.
I am confused at that language. Could you explain, is the airport at I-40 the only one on the Campo scale, or is it the only one in addition to the others that is on the Campo scale?
It's the only one on the Campo High Injury Network.
Oh, my. Thank you.
Okay. And so, moving on for here for our high-risk areas, we also evaluated roadway segments, but the example I am providing here is for intersections. This considers crash risk for all modes of travel and also uses the same methodology as the Campo Blueprint for Safety. The intersections that stand out most here are those along Davis Drives, McCrimmon Parkway, and Morrisville Parkway, and similar to the relationship to the Campo Blueprint for Safety I mentioned on the last slide, the intersections that qualify as both the town's and Campo's high-injury intersections are the Davis Drive-Morrisville Carpenter Road intersection and the Morrisville Carpenter Road-Aвиation Parkway-NC 54 intersection. So we have two intersections here that are also pinging on Campo's high-injury intersection. map. All right, so that covers our safety data analysis, and now we will move into the required goal-setting for the plan. As I mentioned earlier, the plan must set an eventual goal of zero roadway fatalities and serious injuries, and if a jurisdiction is starting at a status of consistently contending with fatalities and serious injuries, the goal may be a percentage reduction within a specific timeframe. This is how NC DOTs and Campo's goals have been crafted as provided on the slide. However, for Morrisville, our crash data revealed that we have had zero fatal or zero zero, sorry, zero fatal and serious injury crashes in 2023, which is the most recent year again of data made available for the crashes we needed to evaluate. So the proposed recommended goal for Morrisville is to focus on keeping it at zero rather than reducing it by a certain amount. So Morrisville's proposed goal is to aspire to sustain zero fatal and serious injury crashes on streets and roads serving residents and visitors through 2035. Okay, so let's move on to our public outreach and engagement efforts today and the feedback we received from that effort. For our first of two total engagement touchpoints throughout the plan development, a survey was open for a period of three weeks back in June, and this was supported by in-person outreach with input solicitation tools provided at staff tables, at the Town's Music in the Park event on June 6th, and at the Western Wake Farmer's Market on June 14th. This push was also supported by our communications department on social media and in next week in Morrisville. Approximately fifty participants provided feedback at the in-person events, and the survey had a total of twenty-eight respondents. So let's dive into the feedback we received through the aforementioned survey and the in-person events. So the survey asked respondents to rank a total of fourteen safety issues they thought were the most concerning in Morrisville, and those registering in the top five are provided here on the slide. Distracted road users and red light or stop sign running were consistently ranked among the highest, with drivers not stopping or yielding, speeding, and there not being enough safe spaces to walk or bike also registering in the top five of the total fourteen issues provided as options. The survey also asked respondents to choose their top five most-desired safety improvements in Morrisville out of a total of fourteen options, and improving intersections that are busy, complex, or confusing was hands-down the most-desired improvement. Adding sidewalks, crosswalks, and bike lanes and paths were also highly-desired improvements, and improving rail crossings also made several respondents top five. The survey asked respondents about their familiarity with a number of safety problem countermeasures, ranging from such measures as traffic calming to traffic enforcement to flashing beacons to limited movement intersections, to get an idea of how those traveling in our community view these in terms of effectiveness and how they may receive them and react to them if implemented. The greatest familiarity with was with such countermeasures as traffic calming, flashing yellow arrows and other signal-phasing options, and sidewalks and bikeways, for which all respondents indicated they were somewhat familiar. Respondents generally indicated less familiarity with traffic safety education, intersections with limited turning movements, and red light cameras in relative terms, but for all countermeasures except for traffic safety education, their familiarity was still pretty strong. Another area of input we received via the survey was respondents' identification of dangerous locations throughout the town. They were asked to identify witness crash or near-missed locations, as well as dangerous locations where they feel uncomfortable. And what this revealed is most crashes or near-misses are at locations on Morrisville's high-injury network, which helps confirm the results of our safety data analysis. However, places identified as dangerous locations by respondents are more dispersed. For the input solicitation tools we used at the Music in the Park event and at the Farmer's Market, we asked for attendees' preferences for various safety deficiency countermeasures, and this revealed that roundabouts incited the strongest reaction from participants. It was the most preferred, but also the most disliked or confusing. Meteor and refuge islands were not disliked or found confusing at all, and all way stops were the least preferred. We also had a way for participants to provide their own thoughts through write-in comments, and those provided suggested need for more and better pedestrian facilities, including roadway pedestrian crossings and separated bike lanes and connections to greenways as how we can make roads safer. So these were very active, these write-in comments were all very active transportation-focused. Okay, so now we I will cover our next steps for further plan development. And a task that is underway right now and is close to being finished up is the policy review stage of our plan development, which reviews the town's policies, plans, and guidelines for their attention to safety needs and identifies opportunities for improvement. The idea here is that USDOT does not want to give money to local governments to make transportation safety improvements if they continue to create their own safety problems when they have the opportunity through their own policy setting and planning to prevent them. This exercise involves such plans as such as this exercise involves things such as plans, policies, and guidelines, such as our UDO, our Comprehensive Transportation Plan, roadway maintenance programming, speed enforcement, and others. And the final stage of plan development is the development of projects and strategies to address safety deficiencies we've identified. This stage considers the use of proven countermeasures, many of which you heard about earlier as I covered our engagement results, so things like roundabouts, traffic calming, rumble strips, et cetera, and it prioritizes improvements and strategies and organizes them into a coordinated timeline for implementation. So that concludes my plan development progress update overview for you, but we are certainly open to hearing any feedback that you may have in reaction to what you've to what we've learned today through the plan development process so far to date, and any any reaction that you have on, you know, or feedback that you have on next steps. But I have included three questions here that I think best focus where we would like to get a reaction or feedback from you, and they include, you know, given the crash data that I presented to you, is the proposed goal appropriate for driving the town's approach to transportation safety? And that's really like, okay, we're at zero, so should we stay at should we aspire to stay at zero? That's pretty much kind of what we're getting at there. Another question is, are there any you saw some locations where we identified trouble spots. Are there any locations beyond those already identified that may exhibit safety risks for the town to consider that we're not detecting, that you may be aware of, that you've heard about, that your constituents have heard about? And are there any safety countermeasures that are less desired or that we should not emphasize for consideration of implementation? So instead of asking you, hey, what do you like? Do you like roundabouts? Do you like meteor, what do you not like? That's it's probably easier to, you know, what what do you think is confusing for people? What do you think is is difficult for the community? It's probably easier to ask the question that way. So I will keep quiet now and let you let you do your thing.
Okay, I think we'll probably want to ask questions first, and then we can all go down the line to react if people want. But first, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, followed by Councilmember Fender.
Thank you for the comprehensive presentation. I may not directly answer all of your three questions because as I'm listening to the presentation, I have some questions of my own, of course. First of all, I wanted to clarify the difference in the high-risk areas for our town versus Campo. Is the high-risk areas of the town based on the survey data that you've acquired and the using the same criteria as Campo?
So it's not it is not based on the survey. It is based on purely crash analysis, and that that frequency of crashes weighted by severity. And so when you do it at a larger regional scale at the size of Campo, your dataset is huge, right? Like, because it's so, but when you when you zero that in on our approximately ten-square-mile area, your dataset becomes a whole lot smaller. And so there's a lot of things, what what you're seeing with us applying the same methodology as Campo is you're seeing a lot of our thoroughfares light up, right, with high crash risk and severity. But at the a larger scale where there's more data and there's more categorical separation between them, you may not see them light up.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. I was wondering if the crash data was adjusted for trip counts?
My my understanding is yes, and I I don't I didn't provide a lot of information on like the method, the background meta-methodology for how all of this was put together. I can I can grab that for you. This work was done by VHB, so town staff didn't do it, but I can go and get that information and pass it along.
That that would be very helpful, because I think when you're looking at the entire region and you're going, okay, but there's only one intersection that, you know, Airport and I-40 that counts as a really serious intersection in the region, I would argue that based on the number of trips that we have in the town and adjusted for volume, we probably have a little different reading on what's more serious and risky. Also, there are two major traffic pattern changes since 2023 that could affect the analysis today, such as Morrisville Carpenter Road expansion from two to four lanes from Davis to 54, and also that new diverging diamond configuration at Airport Boulevard is less than intuitive. So that increases the risk. It's acknowledged by Campo as being a risky area, but even further risky because of the pattern is not common within the region yet.
Just to follow up on that real quick, one thing that we have, as we have headed into the project development and strategies phase, Morrisville, so you saw the span of data analysis, the the years, 2016 to 2023. One of the things that I wanted to look at was, okay, well, we just had during that span of time, Morrisville Carpenter was improved, and did we see any drop-off in the, you know, crashes? And we did. So that's one of the things we had to look at is like, you know, be skeptical of what the data is telling us a little bit, because we have a lot of projects that have been implemented in Morrisville, and maybe they may have corrected the issue or reduced the number of crashes and the severity, or maybe not, maybe they've made it worse. So we are looking into that a little bit close more closely.
Very good. So I guess we're on the same page with that. So one of the areas at 54 in Morrisville Carpenter Road is the railroad crossing, and that will continue to be a challenge for the town because working with the railroad is difficult, but it is not an intuitive crossing. You go to Cary and the railroad crossing is before the intersection. Ours is kind of halfway in the middle, and it people don't know where to stop, and there's lines that are drawn on the road, but when it's covered with cars at at rush hour, drivers do get confused. So it that to me is one of the risky areas that should be at the top of the list in the region, because there's been several fatalities over the years with involving railroad cars, which are very sad, but it it's attuned to the fact that that is a non-intuitive railroad crossing with markings that are are we're trying to improve it, but still need some attention and some support from both the Campo organization as well as the railroad.
Yes, that and that intersection is pinging in the high-injury network for intersections, for sure.
Okay, good, good.
And we have a project that will touch that and make some improvement to it, which is the Aviation Parkway widening program for construction and FY-30, it will pull, it's supposed to pull that intersection farther to the east some.
I'd be ecstatic, trust me. It's it's very, it's difficult now, and I drive that road all the time, so, and cars are not behaving in a way that you would expect because they're not, they don't live in that area and probably don't do use the intersection on a regular basis. So I do want to let the other council member speak, so I'll quickly kind of go to the other points that you had a question about, any gaps, any missing intersections or something that didn't make the list. And I I like Morrisville Parkway because that is adjacent to the Cary boundary. I think that gets missed in our analysis a lot, and the way that Morrisville Parkway passes over Davis Drive and lands in Cary, it's a blind bump. It's just a natural curve, and it creates issues and accidents there with the traffic light being, needs to be more controlled in those movements. And there's also, there's a lack of pedestrian safety potentially where Davis Drive and the Breckenridge community is. I know a lot of people want to move between the shopping center and their apartments, and or they want to cross in that area, and that potentially could be a risky area. So then my last point is, instead of saying what safety countermeasures you don't like, I actually want to throw it back and say, I would really like to see more crosswalks that are painted so that drivers get a signal that people are going to be crossing, you know, pedestrians are going to need to walk through the town more, and visual reminders that people do want to cross the street. If we could understand and appreciate what a crosswalk is required or not, and and we used to have these beacon signals and some of them that were ignored, that's kind of a behavior training kind of thing for drivers and pedestrians. But to have more crosswalks, even if they're not signalized, I think would kind of show people where they can cross, and also if there's legal ramifications if cars do not stop when people are in a physical crosswalk.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I may, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, any particular places or intersections where you want to see those crosswalks, or just more in general?
I would like an analysis done. I'm not about to, you know, I I could name twenty, but I would like to, you know, maybe discuss that at a later time.
Okay, great, thank you, appreciate it. Councilmember Fender, please.
Thank you, and thank you for this information. I did have a couple of clarity questions on Slide 14. So what would be more helpful to me is to have a map where it shows specifically the incidents or the locations for the fatalities and the high injuries rather than just these red lines? Because I I would just like to see the specific locations to see whether there's any sort of trend. I mean, I know we're concerned about intersections, but I think some of the fatalities have not occurred at intersections. They're they're along the road in certain areas. So would that be possible to get that data and show it on a map?
So I can look into that. My, I don't know if the database used to pull this data from, it pulls point data. I don't, or if it just, you see differences at roadway segments there? They're defined by different kind of stretches, particularly on NC-54. I do know that they are coded to those segments, but I don't know if there's point data for them, but I can look into it and see. And but I and I do agree, if we could put that on there, that you, yeah, that would be helpful.
Right, because I think we may be able to gain additional insight as to why there the fatalities are located in those specific locations.
Right. My understanding is just, I I can't answer one way or the other, but I I think the the point data is not there, because I think this is something that we've discussed and tried to get at, but that was a long time ago, so. But yeah, we'll look into it again, just to just to be sure.
Or even, I mean, to keep it simple, just look at the seven cases of the fatalities in those locations. All right, then my next question was on 27, Slide 27. You were going through this really, really fast at this point, and I missed what you were saying, something about NC DOT, and then you said blah, 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 and then you started listing the bullet points. So I totally missed what this had to do with NC DOT.
Okay, so this is really what I was talking about here was USDOT.
Okay.
Which is the Safe Streets for All program. They that is the federal agency or federal department that administers the Safe Streets for All program through which the town can apply for implementation grants. And what the policy review is really about, kind of what the idea is, is the town needs to evaluate its, it it should not be creating its own safety problem. is the town needs to evaluate its, it, it should not be creating its own safety problem through development that it regulates, through, you know, speed enforcement that it can, you know, speed, uh, speed limit setting that it can regulate, speed enforcement practices, that sort of thing. Like you, the town should not be creating its own problem and then coming to us to apply for money to correct those problems. So that's what the idea here is. I actually used to be, before I came to the town of Morseville, I worked for US DOT. And I was actually a reviewer of these grant applications. And so that's something that we consistently looked at when we reviewed applications for these grants was, are you, you know, are you, are you putting your foot in your mouth type of thing? You know, are you, you can, what you need, the idea is the town needs to do everything it can to not create its own problem.
Right. So in your review of the town of Morseville, have you seen areas where we are creating our own problems?
Not necessarily. This has not been completed by the consultant yet. So I haven't gotten the final report on this to see what, it's supposed to be completed by the end of this month. And I will see that. But I mean, in my experience since I've been with the town, I haven't, I can't point to anything. I mean, I think the town's actually does, has done a good job. And it's evident to me throughout the landscape that it's done a good job of, you know, trying to do what it can to preserve safety and advance safety.
Okay, thank you for that. And then lastly, to answer your bullet points there at the end, I think the first was the goal setting. And I agree that our goal should be zero fatalities and serious injuries. I think our goal should always be zero fatalities because if your goal is one fatality, you are, you're in effect saying you're okay with one person dying. So I think our goal should always be zero fatalities. And that perspective comes from my background working on construction zones for engineering firms where, you know, for them, their safety program and safety culture is very stringent. And they have a safety program that is called beyond zero. And that, and that's what, because at one point in time, they did have goals that were one or two fatalities for the company nationwide or worldwide. But they have since moved to, you know, a zero fatality goal at all times. So I think, anyway. The second bullet point, are there locations that are on these? You know, one of the gaps I see, and maybe that's not the scope of your presentation, but I, I have to add, I think from what I hear from residents, specifically in my own neighborhood, is there is a huge, huge, huge concern with people speeding through our neighborhoods and running stop signs. And the concern there is like what happened in the town of Apex, is someone speeding through the neighborhood on their phone and hitting and killing a small child. I mean, and all it takes is mine. And I don't, you know, I know we're not looking at that. I know in the twelve years that I have lived in that neighborhood, this has always been a concern. And it doesn't seem like we do a whole lot. It's to, we have police officers that show a presence intermittently from time to time. We've had traffic studies, you know, the last one was still like three or four years ago. But I, I still think it's a huge concern in our neighborhoods by the residents. You know, because there's a high risk for pedestrian fatality being hit by a car. And I don't think, you know, we're not addressing it with this. And it doesn't seem like we have a very comprehensive plan to address it. Okay, lastly, safety countermeasures. I'm going to go ahead and say that rather than less desired, I, I am all for roundabout. I think, I think they're more desired, you know, I get it that some people may find they may be confusing, but I just think that's their, you know, their lack of experience with them. I think they're a good measure for keeping traffic flowing. I guess what would be less desired are the always stop signs or stoplights. So that's it. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Garamella, please.
A good presentation, I think, over and again over several years, the same kind of data is getting portrayed, the same amount of crash tests. And it is kind of sad that the DOT or US DOT tracks the fatality as the top scorer to decide if it really wants to do something or not. It's a hard reality, but that's a fact. And, but they're not interested in safety, in avoiding it, but only it rises above the occasion only when a crash happens and there is a severity. So, so it's kind of a catch twenty-two. You try to do it, you know, you'll never reach up to it. And when you basically, someone dies, then they'll, you know, what's the point of counterreacting when they can be productive? But that's always a catch series for me. But personally, I also agree, like, crash data is good, but what is a town approach for transportation safety, right? Zero is good as an answer, but what are we doing to achieve that? Because you start looking at the data, everything points for me, again, you know, everyone drives Morseville. Number one issue we have is the traffic lights and the timing of the traffic lights. It is the number one issue. It frustrates everyone. And why it has more wrecks and why of these things? Because they don't want to wait one more cycle. They want to just see anything possible to cut it through, especially the lefts. Ninety percent of the accidents that happen at Marshall, McRummond and Davis and Marshall Carpenter, this one is all mostly lefts. No one is rear-ending there, you know, like. And so my thing is, we have, or period of last seven, eight years, we talk about it, but nothing has been done in terms of signal lights. And how do we explain, today after the event at Spark, I was coming back. Two traffic lights, I got awaited at the Sheetz gas station, you know, and why? Literally, why is the question, you know, like it's not even peak traffic to hit it. And when they, everyone has that thing, okay, two more cars, let me try, one my luck. And that's when all these things happen. And we are creating that. And we are not doing anything. And that is my biggest problem that I have today is why can't we create a safe passage? Like, you know, a solid green or something like that? And try to see how that acts. At one point of time, I know Chief Andrews and others, previous policy chief, they, we had, I think it was twenty twenty-one when there were a lot of crashes going on, then they changed the signaling of how it was like a solid green versus a flashy green or a yellow flash or those kind of things. It has helped. And then something happened, you know, the crashes started again. So we control that and we have the power to do that. And we continue not to do that. So, so that's, that's what I would say. And the other areas are mostly pedestrian safety, especially we lag behind on our walkways. You know, so basically there are many projects which are still prioritized, but not given the, you know, a green light to start doing it. Just if you take Louis Stephen near the Breckenridge, it's like five years in making. And so we are slowing our own projects. And that is a way to reduce, you know, the transportation safety because those people go fast as, as much as Donna says. And a hundred percent correct in every neighborhood, everyone wants to fly. And AAA has always said that most of the accidents that happen within the six mile radius of your house, either coming in or going out. And I have crashed twice, so I know I'm still within the six mile radius. So I say that data is still correct. So, so we can have these feedback sessions, but I'm not seeing any action is what I'm trying to say. What are we doing to basically fix it? And, and so I don't know what else to say.
No, I, I think those are good points. Thank you. When this comes back in September, we will have, you know, some strategies, you know, the, the plan comes back to you, you will see the strategies and projects developed to.
I would like.
Well, help them identify which ones to prioritize from our perspective.
Traffic lights is number one for me. Like, the more we fix the traffic lights, the less. Most of the accidents are happening at intersections, right? Do you agree with that?
I mean, well, yeah, that's where there's more conflicts for, for them to occur. It's either that or sightline issues, where you have sightline issues.
Yeah, and Marshall Parkway has sightline and those things. And what measures are we taking, like cutting the trees or like having a better sight or?
All of the above. I mean, it could be the angle, it could be shrubbery in the way, it could be trees in the way, it could be, yeah. It could be curves, you know, Morseville Parkway is curvy. And, you know, there was a time in urban planning land when that was really attractive as a way to design roads, but it can be dangerous, as we've learned.
Okay. Councilmember Al, please.
Most, most of my points have been made. I, I, first of all, I, I, I think just like all of my colleagues, I think zero goal for fatalities is, should always be our priority. I know that Mayor Protem was reminding me on, you know, before the presentation about autonomous vehicles, you know, so maybe about twenty fifty or so, we may not have any, which I never, I never thought of. That's a good point. Couple of other thoughts that come to mind, just I think in terms of, I think it's already been mentioned, in terms of locations, definitely concerns about Morseville Parkway continuing to be. I run a lot through there and I see always concern about speeding. I've had a couple of close calls myself as an avid runner of people not stopping at the stop sign near where the mayor lives, coming from Preston, they just keep going and they don't see you. Or, you know, coming through from Park West. And I see this in my own neighborhood as well, people not stopping at the stop sign. So I think that's something in terms of just not only hitting another car, hitting someone that's running, hitting someone that's walking, hitting someone on a bike. Crosswalk visibility is also important. We've done a lot, made a lot of progress in that. But I think when we see the speeding occurring both on Morseville Carpenter and Morseville Parkway, crosswalk visibility, I think just enforcing people that when they see the flashing red to stop, let people cross over. And I agree with the traffic lights because I see a lot of drivers getting impatient and they just want to, they see the flashing yellow. And especially on that Davis Drive, Morseville Carpenter intersection, I always get concerned of young kids, young drivers getting impatient, having a little bit of that blind spot and then just, you know. So anyway, those are just a couple of things that I have in mind. I think that I would like to see us, and a lot of this is really value in the data, just making sure that we're sharing this, you know, information out there on our websites, on our apps and things like that, so that people can kind of know, you know, where more of the accidents are occurring. So those are only the value adds I would have, you know, to what's already been presented. Hope that's helpful information for you. Thank you for a good report, though.
I think Council, Mayor Protem has a quick follow-up.
Yeah, now thinking about countermeasures, you know, I would really love to have a dashboard on top of every signal. There were twenty-four hundred crashes here, so don't be the next one there. So, so, you know, I mean, people don't understand what the amount of crashes just on Davis Drive. And let me ask the other question is, we, especially the Davis and McRummond, we are going away with that, right? We are having that new, when is that coming?
So the, the lead date for that is November twenty-sixth, November of twenty twenty-sixth.
Okay, so, so pretty much like even if you say like twenty thirty-five, I'm assuming this will be a zero at this intersection, Davis and McRummond, after we get that, correct?
Well, and this is saying you're going to be at zero starting with, well, I mean, you can't control twenty twenty-four because you're setting a goal in twenty twenty-five. We don't have that date yet. But for twenty twenty-five, twenty, until, through twenty thirty-five, yes.
Oh, so, so that is one less headache. So we have other ones to manage.
Thanks for your patience. Councilmember Johnson?
So thank you for it. Great presentation, good information. To your first question, yes, zero fatal and serious injury crashes, that should be our goal at zero. So I appreciate you bringing that forward. We've heard a lot of locations that we've talked about here that are in addition. I think you've hit on the right ones, obviously through the survey from public and then, you know, all the crash data. So you're already hitting those. And some of this has already been said, but I'm going to repeat it again. The Greenway crossings, I think, are really important in town, making sure that we have high visibility crosswalks. And where those crosswalks are, there should be protected pedestrian crossing with the lights. And so like I will tell you, for instance, I, 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 I travel on Morseville Parkway a lot and I'm constantly making a right onto Davis Drive to head north to RTP to here, wherever. And when that pedestrian crossing approaches to cross Davis Drive lights up, I can still make a right enter. And that's not a protect, in my opinion, is not a protected pedestrian crossing safety situation. So I'd like to see more opportunities for protection to our pedestrians. Even though I know your data information kind of shows that a little lower in, in all the crashes that are on here. But I think I, I'm concerned too about young children. I see kids on bicycles. The intersection at Morseville Carpenter, Davis Drive, same thing, McCrimmon at Davis Drive. And I want to make sure that anyone crossing it, it's as safe as can be. So, so along with, I have an issue with lights in general in this town. So I would, I'm going to echo what Mayor Protem said about the timing of lights. And, and he is absolutely correct. People get frustrated. That's why we see what we, we see. And that's why people are racing up to a light and going through it when it's red. So along with the timing he talked about, I, I do not know, and I'd like to see, I think potentially, this is just my kind of gut and what I see when I'm out there. I'd like to see when a light turns red for one portion of the intersection before the other turns green, that there be a longer lag time. Because when I am the first vehicle and my light turns green for me to move, I never move right away. I am always assuming somebody else coming in a different direction is running a red light and I don't care to be hit by them at any angle. So, so, and I've seen that, that's why I, I do that. So I'd like to see that a little longer. Maybe that would help. I don't know. And then the last thing about traffic lights that bugs me is this flashing yellow. I'm not sure everybody still understands what that means. I, I, and again, this is just my gut being out on the road, watching and seeing what's out there. So I, I don't know, they're not going to go away, I guess. But if we could kind of, I don't know, eliminate them, make them shorter, longer, I don't know what to do with them. So flashing yellow always drives, drives me a little crazy, only because I'm, I'm not sure we all understand what it means. I would continue doing education because all of that is all about education. And I just, I just thought of this too. It still amazes me when we have the protected crosswalks on Morseville Carpenter where the light turns red. I can't tell you how many people I've seen just blow through that. Like red is a suggestion now? And, and I really, and I've seen a lot of kids trying to cross Morseville Carpenter and nobody, I've never seen anybody step out right away. They don't wait until every vehicle, every vehicle all over the roadway has stopped and then they proceed across. So anyhow, that's just a side. So I think you're on the right track with identifying places to, to start and prioritize. Um, and then as far as, um, countermeasures, I'm not a real big fan of these roundabouts. I understand, um, how they keep vehicles moving. I think they're, they can be confusing. But having said that, um, I would not, uh, eliminate, um, any measure. I, I mean, whatever out, is out there that works and is going to, um, keep us at that zero fatal and serious injury crashes, I think we need to, um, evaluate and I think we eliminate nothing and try to evaluate everything and make sure we're, we, we're doing the best we can and, um, and making these streets as safe as we can for our riders, our bicycle riders, our pedestrians, and of course, all those in vehicles too. So, so thank you for this. And thank you because I, I assume this means funding's coming down the road too. We're gonna be applying for lots of grants that'll help us, um, yeah. So thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
So, um, starting with the first one, I think zero is a very good aspirational goal to try to keep us there going forward. Um, a lot of what people said has prompted thoughts. Um, when Councilmember Johnson was just talking about the hawk signals and the red, I've heard residents say that they're a little bit confused and we have three different hawks in town and some of them have different signage. So some of them say pause after flashing, some of them say stop on red. So if we can work on more education and maybe make those consistent, that might help. I know the thing she said about, um, taking right onto Davis from Morsville Parkway, she uses that probably more than any of us. So she's a little bit more insight into that. I wasn't aware that the pedestrians, even when they press the button, don't get any protection. So there was complaints about Park West, coming out of Park West, um, near Ivy Cottage. So that was changed actually, so now there is protection for those pedestrians even, so no one gets to go. So they have a, a little bit of a lead time coming out of there, 'cause that was a problem. So that, that's a possible thing. So if there's other intersections that you just identified like that one, I think it's good to investigate that. Um, the thing about traffic lights, like you got Chapel Road and you got McCrimmon. You're trying to move traffic in both of those directions. So do you prioritize one over the other? I mean, the lengths are the lengths. So there's the balance there. Um, whatever we can do to make sure that maybe the delay in having everyone have a red for a little while is probably really smart on our high incidence areas. It's better to stop everyone for an extra second just to prevent the crashes. So I, I never really heard about that or thought about it, but I think that's a really good idea. Um, locations beyond identified. I think we're realizing that Aviation Parkway is a pedestrian risk waiting to happen. So we haven't had an incident there, but anything that we can do to address that proactively before we have a problem, as mentioned, I think that's gonna be important. Um, Lewis Stevens, as was mentioned, I don't spend much time in there, but that's a really curvy road. And if people are walking down that, that's not great. Um, also, not really mentioned, and since I live near Park West, I see the park crossing from Park Place to Park West over Cary Parkway and using that middle median. So there's a lot of safety there, but someone might get hit sometime if someone's not paying attention. So there's crossings at both ends, but there's a block there that people cross between those. So that would be another one that's not really identified right now. That might be something to take a look at. Um, I really am amused by putting a sign over the traffic lights themselves, but I think a social media campaign identifying which intersections have lots of crashes would bring awareness to that. So I think there's, there's an opportunity there for us to maybe do that. Like, near the railroad tracks, we have a lot of crashes. So let people know that, so they're a little bit more aware and trying not to be the next crash. Um, uh, can you put up the list of the countermeasures?
Okay, so those are just examples. There's more than just that, but...
Right, but these are the ones that are kind of top of the list. So are rumble strips not traffic calming, like speed humps? 'Cause I, I lump those together.
It's, so rumble strips can't, yeah, they can be tra, they can be traffic calming because if you don't, even more so than the width of a lane, depending on how they're milled into the pavement. Um, but they can, you know, they, nobody wants to roll over a rumble strip as they're trying to move through a lane. Um, so...
I guess I'm, so those aren't the drunk bunks on the side, those are actual, do we have any rumble strips in town?
I'm not sure if we do, um...
We do not, okay. So that's something I'm not really interested in introducing, they're just kind of loud.
Yeah, and, so we are looking at, um, so they can be difficult for bicyclists as well.
You're right.
Um, more difficult for bicyclists and bicyclists typically don't like them. Now, we are looking at, um, rumble strips for delineation of travel lanes from bike lanes on McCrimmon Parkway for that, for that stretch between, um, Airport and Perimeter Park, where we can't fit a travel lane, we can't, we cannot fit a bike lane there um, because then it would require the curbs to be moved out and, you know, there's... So in order to fit a bike lane there, we would, you know, we want, and it, it can only be four feet. And there needs to be some type of separation, between better separation from the travel lanes, bike lane. So in that case, is something we're looking at, uh, doing a rumble strip for, just to provide that added protection for a bike lane that is less than standard.
Right, okay, that makes sense. Um, all the other ones, I think, let's use the whole toolbox. So I don't really see any that I don't like. I think roundabouts, um, are effectively used other places. Um, if possible, if we could not end up with something like Hillsborough Street where they had too many lanes on their roundabout and they had to just road diet it 'cause it was just too, too confusing for people. I think a single lane roundabout is reasonable. Um, so everyone's had a chance to weigh in. I think you got our three answers from everybody. I think there might be one or two people who wanna revisit something. Um, Mayor Portem, do you have more?
Yeah, one of the countermeasures that I have seen not here, but, yeah, actually rally downtown in other areas whenever I can there is the moment it hits red, it starts counterclockwise. Like, it's thirty seconds, so it's, it'll go from twenty-nine, twenty-eight backwards. So people know exactly how many more seconds before the light again turns green. You know, that sets an expectation, otherwise it just frustrates because they just don't want to lose that particular time interval and try to cut it through. I think that, that would create an awareness that some drivers are sloppy and like taking their own sweet time in taking a left when they can quickly go and give others a chance, uh, to cut through the, the traffic. So that, that's, I've seen, and has worked very well in other areas.
Thank you.
I don't see anyone else, so, um, do you have what you need, sir?
Oh, I, absolutely I do. I appreciate, I appreciate your engagement and your feedback. And, uh, I'll, we'll take this back and put it into our work for our next steps and we'll see you back here in September.
Okay, will there be more opportunity for resident engagement before then? Or are you just going to report now? Will there be additional opportunities for more resident engagement or is that past?
So, as we have, so, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm having a hard time hearing you. Let me get...
Okay, sorry. Um, is there more opportunity for resident engagement or is the next thing is when you're bringing us the report?
There is. Um, so we have one more ti, we have one last touch point with the public that we will be sharing, um, the, the strategies and some countermeasures with. Um, I'm trying to get set up to go to Smoresville for that, as well as the Farmer's Market again. Um, we're also doing, we, we also scheduled a stakeholder workshop for other, other town departments, police, fire, engineering, communications, um, to respond to and react to the proposed countermeasures and strategies as well, so that we can get more eyes on what might be proposed outside of just planning and, at the planning level, you know, planning department. Um, so that's happening as well to better inform this.
Okay, that's wonderful. Thank you very much. Really appreciate the conference report.
Yep, thank you.
Take care. Thank you to VHB as well. Okay, moving on to item twelve. We have one action item scheduled this evening. We now invite Erin L. Hudson, Communications and Outreach Director slash Strategic Performance Manager to the podium, lots of hats, to update Town Council on the Connect Morsville Strategic Plan. Council is scheduled to take action this evening and we have motion language at our seats.
All right, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, so thank you for your time this evening as we approach our finale of the Connect Morsville Strategic Plan Revision Updates. All right, so on the right you will see, uh, items that were covered by consensus decision at your June tenth work session discussion. Those breaking into two categories. Minor updates were made to the goal titles and goal descriptive statements. Um, the goals were also reordered to better align with and reflect community prioritization feedback. New items that are on the right include the addition of a seventh goal reflecting organizational resiliency and a plan addendum that will identify resiliency efforts within each of the seven planned goals. So tonight, our final revisions that have been provided in your agenda packet have included the updates that are above in blue, as well as the first green block on the right. The addendum will be completed with those finalization, uh, comprehensive plan documents. Um, additionally, you have been provided a highlight of outcome measures that have been aligned through department strategic plans and those really showcase broader organizational applicability. It's important to note that our outcome measures are not necessarily included for approval, but we have provided those for awareness. The outcome measures, what we know about those is that they can really be subject to addition or modification as time passes and work evolves and those can be further defined. As council's aware, there has been some transition in our department head leadership staff over the last several months. So given that transition, given that consideration, you won't see any, uh, outcome measures related to the Parks Department because we've allowed them some additional time to continue to work through and develop those. Our final objective tonight is to seek council approval of the resolution twenty twenty-five dash one forty-eight dash zero that will amend our Connect Morsville Strategic Plan. So as I move through the next several slides, feel free to stop me at any point if you have any questions and I'm happy to talk through those when we get to them. So in these slides, the goal name and descriptive statement are gonna be shown in green and the proposed reordering of the goal numbering to align with and reflect the community prioritization feedback is going to be shown in red. As previously reflected in the community feedback, quality of life and public safety were consistently listed as the top two priorities, so those are now ordered as such. Additionally, the department strategic plan aligned outcome measures are now also shown in red and italicized here for your information. Again, we want to just note that our department strategic plan outcome measures were developed by town staff. Those have undergone, uh, review and feedback from both myself and the senior leadership team. Um, the corresponding department is also parenthetically identified at the end of any related outcome measure. These measures reflect work that is being done currently to move departmental efforts forward, much like our Connect Morsville Strategic Plan reflects our organizational vision and strategy for the future. Um, so I won't read each of these measures on each slide, but I hope that you can see the alignment that's been demonstrated through the work efforts and supporting our long-term goals between our departments and our organizational plan. And as mentioned, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on any slide, just feel free to, to stop me. All right, so nothing, nothing drastic to point out here with public safety. Again, quality of life and public safety significantly, uh, high priorities for our community. Um, did find it a little, uh, funny or ironic, I guess, that, uh, engaged inclusive community fell about midway in our original plan and it's still there. Uh, it didn't move in priority order, so it's still pretty well set where it is. Um, you'll also see a parenthetical indicator here of outcome measure three point three that indicates special events. Uh, so what's unique about that is that as our town and our events continue to grow, our event production involvement is also continuing to grow. And we are continuing to involve more staff and more departments. Uh, so we're just seeing a need to better gauge and follow what all is involved in those processes. Uh, so you may see some similar type of metrics, um, arise even more so as time moves on. You'll also likely not be surprised to see, uh, many of our departments that have high visibility and community involvement with broader organizational alignment to community mobility. Uh, here you'll see public works, engineering, and planning are demonstrated. And moving on to economic prosperity. For those who were able to attend our Economic Development Announcement this afternoon, you'll see the importance of the outcome measures that have been identified through our Economic Development Department with that broader organizational alignment. And specifically for outcome measure five point three, today's announcement met and doubled that target. So in the realm of operational excellence, you'll see the greatest variety of departments who have identified outcome measures with broader organizational applicability. This is really because operationally at our core, everything we do is for the advancement and betterment of our organization and our community. I think it's also important that I note, not every single organizational, or excuse me, every single operational measure that every department identified is included here. We just chose the ones that really have that broader organizational applicability. So as noted, more could be to come, some of these could be slightly modified, but we also want to give ourselves that flexibility and that opportunity to continue to move through those uh, without being maybe necessarily, um, beholden to any one particular measure. All right, so we've mentioned that organizational resiliency is our newest goal that was added to the plan and will have broad reach. In summary, organizational resiliency really just refers to a local government's capacity to effectively plan for, respond to, and recover from disruptions. Those disruptions can be economic, public health, natural disasters, cyber threats, infrastructure failures, anything of the like. That also means that in response to that, we maintain continuity of operations, we protect our public resources, we maintain fiscal and operational stability, and we ensure and support long-term stability within our community. Again, you will see a variety of departments here who have identified outcome measures with broad organizational applicability. I also want to highlight that departments developed their plans prior to council considering and including this additional seventh goal. Many of our departments are already demonstrating resiliency prior to this ever being, um, something for them to align to. Any questions before I move forward, uh, with our, our wrap-up, I guess?
I don't see any, so let's continue.
All right. So very quickly, we are approaching the end of this particular journey. And so as I wrap up, just a reminder that the blue flags here note the steps that we've completed. You'll see that staff formally began this process with council in October of last year, on October twenty-second, exactly nine months ago today. However, staff has been engaged in this work long before and in preparation to bring us to here tonight. The green flag marks our current step and staff's request for approval of the resolution that will amend the Connect Morsville Strategic Plan. That resolution is also identifying a term of three fiscal years and also identifies our next review cycle. Following approval, the yellow flag notes that staff will update all of the comprehensive documentation that's related to the plan and will get that republished to the town's website. At this time, I'd like to ask Deputy Town Manager Giselle Rodriguez if she has any comments to share.
Thank you, Erin, I appreciate it. Um, I would like to take the opportunity to thank Erin for all of the work that she has done on the strategic plan over the years. Um, uh, her position has changed and she now leads the Communications and Outreach Department and we are very grateful for the labor that she is doing there. But now we are reaching the point where she is closing this chapter on the strategic plan to transition and focus on the Communications Department. So definitely want to take the opportunity to thank her for her, her labor and her passion for strategic planning for the town for the number of years that she has. Um, that also means that that has created vacancies, so as now we adopt this strategic plan, it lays the groundwork and the baseline for a new strategic, uh, performance manager to come in and continue this work for the town, which the position is currently advertised and will be the implementation of this new adopted plan, will transition to that position. And we'll continue to keep you updated as we move through. And we'll continue to keep you updated as we move through the hiring process, but thank you.
Thank you, Giselle. All right, with that being said, again, we have reached the end of this particular journey. Before you, you have a resolution in language to approve Resolution 2025-148 to amend the Connect Morrisville Strategic Plan, and staff does recommend approval.
Any questions before I entertain a motion? Seeing none, who would like to make the motion, please? I'll recognize Councilmember Johnson.
I'll make a motion to approve. I love that you call it a journey, by the way, but I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Johnson, and second from Councilmember Scruggs Johnson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously 6-0. Thank you very much from all of us and from the town, a grateful town.
Thank you.
We are now at council and manager comments. Want to let everyone know that we have a full listing of all our events. Please see the town calendar at www.morrisvillnc.gov or go ahead and download our Morrisville Central app, which also has all our events. Mayor Pretend Garamella will share first, then will be followed by Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Johnson, followed by myself.
I have no comments.
I'm going to make a comment, and then I'll be followed by Councilmember Fender. So I want to say that we enjoyed Church Street Park Southern Lot this morning, the Parks and Rec Department, as we continue to celebrate National Parks and Recreation Month here in Morrisville. This was our third time getting together, and staff and families had a great time. I was happy to represent our council for the basketball, volleyball, cricket, and disc golf activities. Speaking of Church Street Park, I wanted to thank my fellow council members, our staff, and our residents for their patience as we all continue to collaborate to find the right balance between preserving our Church Street Park amenity for professional cricket use and for use by local organizations for events. I'm looking forward to a lot of cricket over the next eight weeks and a lot of Bopakama celebrations all around town as well. Councilmember Fender, please.
I have no comment.
Okay. Councilmember Ralph, followed by Councilwoman Scruggs Johnson, please.
Just two comments, Mayor. First of all, I just wanted, first of all, before I make some comments to the public and the council, I just want to congratulate Tiffany Neal, Wade County, all of our staff for the Sparks announcement, just incredible, with the Coriolis Pharmaceuticals first tenant. And I just wanted to take a moment today to reserve the rest of my comments to just address the public and the council, speaking with a heart of gratitude. This will be the first summer in 14 years that I will not be seeking reelection, and I just wanted to tell the community that it wasn't an easy choice, but one that I believe was the best one for me and my family, and also my willingness to seek new adventures in public service. I just want to say that just serving on this council and this community has been one of the greatest honors of my life. I call it one of my greatest chapters, and we've written a great chapter in Morrisville, one of inclusion, innovation, and growth. I'd be here a very long time talking about it, but it's a legacy, I think, that will go down in history as one of the greatest chapters in Morrisville history. And I couldn't, you know, this isn't goodbye. I'll be able to say goodbye in December on my last meeting, but I just wanted to thank my colleagues on the council. I've served with three mayors, a number of councils, three town managers, from John Whitson to Martha Page, Albranda Zutima. Every resident that welcomed me to your homes, late-night meetings, office hours, the partnership and trust in your belief in me and what Morrisville would become has been the greatest, like I said, chapter of my life. And I will take everything that I've learned from each and every one of you in whatever I do in my life moving forward. Each of you have made me a better person, and I'm grateful for that. And it may be the end of the chapter, but my mission to serve will continue. And I just had to tell the public this, just, I know it's, I didn't want to ruin the meeting tonight. To me, it's a celebration, and it's a chapter that we should all be proud of. I want to thank my wife, Como, my best friend from college, from memory university, for standing with me all these years so I could begin this journey along with my children, Sonya and Ryan, and the Ralph and the Parek families, my mom and dad, for everything to do, and my late father-in-law who ran my first two campaigns, Colonel Parek. And I just want to thank you all from the bottom of my heart. Hard not to get emotional, but I'm looking at it as an adventure and also exciting for you all that there'll be probably no more council comments when I leave, so thank you. But thank you all for everything.
Thank you. Councilwoman Scruggs Johnson sets the finish, follow that one.
So from, I don't know how many years it's been, but we had an order of council comments, and I always get the honor of following Steve Ralph. And I always know that he is going to have a few choice words about the community, about service, about the great things that are happening in Morrisville. And Steve, we will miss your comments, but we will try to carry on that tradition. But you're not out yet, so you've still got several more meetings, and we look forward to hearing more of those comments. Yes, exactly, exactly. With that said, I am a big fan of Smoresville, which is celebrated this year as it has for several years now. This has been a signature event for the town, and it celebrates the unique treat of graham crackers, marshmallows, and chocolate. So I really hope that all of you will join us for this signature event and celebrating our town and sweetening everyone's lives. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Deputy Town Manager Rodriguez, do you have any comments for us this evening?
I have a couple of comments for you this evening. The first one, I would say, is a few minutes ago, we were notified that we are having some audio issues. We are able to capture the video of the meeting, and we are also recording the audio, and those will be sent tomorrow and posted online. There is a notice on YouTube, and there's also a notice on the website, so the public is also aware of the challenges that we are going through. They're actively trying to find a solution, but unfortunately, at least we have a backup that will allow us to make it right tomorrow, and we'll post it on the website and on YouTube. The second comment I have for you is, it's a big day for economic development. Council made an investment in economic development, and it's definitely exciting to see the fruits of that. Today, we had an announcement that brings the first tenant to the Spark development. It was great attendance, it was a great event, so thank you for your support, and thank you to staff for bringing that forward. Coriolis Pharma will be on the second floor of the Nova Building on Spark. They will take 13,000 square feet of that building, and their investment is estimated at $10 million with the creation of 15 jobs. Appreciate their investment in our community, and that will represent their first presence in the U.S. It's a German company, and it also represents their headquarters. So very excited for this opportunity for Coriolis Pharma and excited to have them in the community, which they hope to be able to start operations in 2026. But thank you for your support. We'll continue the work of economic development and all the other operations in the town, and thank you for your support, not only today, but through the last few weeks.
Excellent, good. At this time, we are scheduled to go down for our work session, so if you can just relocate with our microphones and our blue, we're going to try to do it without a break. If we get to the work session, the closed session, we can just finish unless you all feel like you need a break. Let's take a 10-minute break, let's please reconvene at 7:52. Thank you very much, down there.
Thank you.
Oh, it's fine.
Yes.
There are still enough.
I'll walk if there is.
You want me to sit here?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's kind of weird.
How are you feeling? Good to see about the comedy.
Sorry.
This was a meeting.
Sorry.
Maybe?
Okay.
And steady.
Oh, that's right.
So.
Sit here, but you only have six people, so it's up to you.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
And I was just.
My family's a little sad.
So I went to Ed.
They built four sitting on top.
I say it's ceiling sitting.
Thank you for the plug.
That's the best part.
It is the best part, I would tell you.
Somebody can sit with the mayor's.
These are very durable tables, much better than the other one.
This is way better.
There's so much you can do.
That being in the way.
That was nice, because you can tell you're working and talking.
So all this was typed into.
And your computer doesn't die in the middle of a session.
Yeah.
I think I can go maybe two rows.
I don't like just when I.
I don't like just when I.
I don't like just when I.
I wish they'd know we're changed.
I wish they'd know we're changed.
I was thinking about.
I just traveled, and I avoided the air.
I got a one-way out there.
I got a one-way out there.
We're from a tight shirt.
But it's a question.
We're talking about bars.
I'll make the picture.
It's too much back.
You guys, that man right there, he takes care of it when it does come in.
That's still that big day, Dave, if he gets noticed, that's it.
He's telling you some backup.
It's like, it's like, it's still not working, you tell it, oh my goodness, but these are just explosive.
I did want to tell you that.
I just threw something away.
Just remind me, and I can do that.
I think you can.
Hey, John, how are you?
Hey.
How are we doing?
Something great, like you are.
Smile on his face.
Teamwork, we'll take our part in the first.
Don't call this.
We're excited about it.
The perspective was important.
I think you do that, so, yes.
I know the information. But I know the information.
Quick is depends on.
I mean, hey, he's hanging in there.
I don't know either.
It's way too slowly, though.
Yeah, absolutely. I like it. I like it. It's nice. See the people speaking?
Why talk quick? Know me better than that. I know you want to come up. Oh, I'm quick. Engineers, engineers know a lot to say. You can pull it up. I don't like to sit low, so I always come up.
Give me a second.
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay.
I'm using my son's subscription.
I like some beers, though.
As I say, it's.
Ah, that's good.
Mom was done and door. I'm just going to sit back with someone just watching. Andrew's got Wally Nick when I watch that. Is it Star Wars?
Those are my props, my tools.
Should have had a little wine and cheese. I called my wife today.
I've just, it's real alcohol. Just here to. We, uh, serve the pleasure of.
Who wants to next?
Oh, it was awesome. I actually thought I was gonna be helping out. Yeah, yeah, yeah. That was very good. I wasn't sure what you were gonna ask. I thought that was a good.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Been hard on that, bud.
Because it's gonna be a quick turnaround. We're gonna send all the applicants to email.
Thank you for having the money, but it was even higher than that. It was even worse. Yeah, we were.
Okay, they're due Friday.
Yeah, I know. I feel targeted. Usually not me.
Uh, everybody's sensing that you can pull the lever and don't go off. It's a child's.
You have your choice. Steve is just.
Just taking two days. Be it to you guys.
That people's having an ensure we're good? Okay, we're gonna come back in session. We have one work session scheduled for this evening. We now invite Engineering Director Spagnoli to the table. There you are. Facilitate our discussion. Thank you, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Potem, council members. Mark Spagnoli, Director of Engineering. Uh, tonight we have a Wade County Convenience Center, uh, project update. Uh, as you may recall, uh, we had a joint project, uh, together with Wade County, uh, in our public works facility at the four fourteen Aviation Parkway, uh, property that we own. And subsequent to all that, you know, we purchased a new piece of property and the, and the county has some interest in continuing their project. So we wanted to give you a product update on what's been happening with that. So, um, I'm gonna take you through that a little bit, then if you could hold your questions to the end, that'd be great. We're looking forward to good discussion. All right, uh, just a quick background. We have been working with the county since twenty eighteen. Uh, we've entered into a number of MOUs with them, uh, pertaining to the development of the joint project. Uh, like I mentioned, the, the project Public Works and the Wade County Convenience Center. Uh, the county did take on a, a managing role for this project back in twenty eighteen when we started this. Uh, there wasn't really much of a capital projects group, uh, run by the town. So we decided that it might be a good option to use the county to help us manage the project and contract with all the various consultants that were required. So they actually took a leadership role, uh, on that project for us, and, um, they did that free of cost. I just wanted to put that out there. Um, over the years, we've had several MOU amendments. We've, we're up to amendment number four with them, uh, to develop that joint project. Uh, the last cost estimate that we had obviously was far exceeded the budget we had allocated for our, for our project. So we decided to just continue that. And we purchased the property at one twenty five International Drive for the purpose of public works. Uh, right now, the county is, is interested in continuing to develop their solid waste convenience center at the property at four fourteen Aviation Parkway. Uh, so they're looking for us to bring it to council and, and for consideration to discuss if, if that's a potential option. All right, I'm gonna take you through, uh, a few maps and a conceptual site plan and, and a few slides here just to get you familiarized with what's happening. Um, and this is pretty much just to go over what, what exists today and to put in context. So this is Aviation Parkway here. Um, highlighted in yellow is the property that the town owns. It, it's thirteen point seven one acres, and that includes the roughly four acres where the public works facility currently exists on Aviation Parkway. Uh, there are some other parcels just to familiarize yourself with the, uh, the area. It's a Cedar Fork District Park, uh, to the bottom of the slide. And then, uh, there are a couple of parcels, um, owned by the county that total six point nine three acres. This is where the existing convenience center is today, occupies about an acre of land. And the reason why they're highlighted in different colors is because, uh, the green one is within the Morrisville Planning Jurisdiction. And the properties highlighted in red are within, uh, Cary Planning Jurisdiction. So that, that does, uh, control some development, uh, interest in those properties. All right, uh, moving on, I wanted to also give some context in terms of developability of these properties. Uh, as you can see, this is the floodplain map, um, for the area. Pretty much, and this doesn't display well, but this, this center area is all blue. You can't build anything in the floodway. Uh, same thing for the, uh, the pinkish area. You really can't build anything within that boundary. So within the, the purple boundary or anything that's not highlighted in color, you can't, it is developable. Um, so roughly on our parcel, there's about nine plus acres of land that is developable, though approximately three acres of this wetland, so some of that would have to be mitigated. And then on these two parcels here adjacent to it, about one point seven five acres are buildable because of the floodplain impact there, um, on these properties. So, and, and these, these properties, we have not, uh, determined whether wetlands are or not. So I just wanted to put that out there as this information in terms of development opportunity. Okay, so, uh, when we were, when we've been working with the county throughout the years on the development of the, of the convenience center project, uh, we did do a wetland determination, and there are about three acres of wetlands on the, um, existing four fourteen Aviation Parkway property that we do own. Um, anything that gets developed here would have to mitigate that. Some of it's jurisdictional, some of it's non-jurisdictional, meaning that some of it does have mitigation costs associated with it. So any development that would happen here would have to, would have to pay for that mitigation of those wetlands. Other wetlands, as I said, have not been determined on other parcels surrounding, uh, this property. Okay, let's, let's dive in a little bit into the actual, uh, proposal that the county has put forward for the, uh, um, convenience center. So they are looking to develop their property within the boundaries of the yellow line. Uh, this occupies about six acres of land, uh, of our total thirteen and change. Uh, we would still be able to maintain our existing public works area for the most part, except the administration building that's right here would be demolished, uh, if we move forward this proposal. So we will be able to maintain our ware- warehouse, storage building, our bulk storage, our sand salt that's underneath the, uh, description here. Uh, this is the convenience center that they're proposing this site here. Uh, it would be a seven days a week operation. Um, and they would only have one entrance in and out from International Drive, and this would be a loop road, and I'll take you a little bit more detailed into that. Uh, but this gives you a general flavor. So all this within the green area, the existing greenway would stay the same as it is today. And all this that's within between the green and the yellow line would, would be maintained as, um, natural area if we went forward with that or whatever we decided to do with it. But, um, we'll get into a little more of those details in a minute. So I thought it'd be important just to show how the, the convenience center would work operationally. Everybody would enter and exit through International Drive and new entrance there. Um, there would also be a driveway connection that allows us to continue the use of our pu- public works facility. So we could still continue use this for laydowns, sand salt storage, and the storage building, warehouse building that exists today. If you were a patron using the convenience center, you follow pretty much the red line. You come in, loop around. If you had, um, household hazardous waste materials, you come onto this section, and then you come back out and, and exit. If not, you bypass in blue, and then you come into the regular convenience center area where you dump your kitchen goods or, or anything of that matter, and then, and then head out. Um, the yellow designates how the actual, uh, trucks would come in and out, you know, for picking up and, and, and disposing, um, of the materials once they're collected, um, on site. That just gives you a flavor for that. So this, the great thing about this new layout is that the, um, because of, of the way this loops around, you got a lot of opportunity for stacking internally. So there wouldn't be any, uh, need to be concerned that it would be stacking out onto aviation of all state within the site. So that's, that's one of the benefits of, of this new circulation plan. All right, so just getting into the potential property uses, and I did want to highlight. Um, I mean, yeah, almost to the end, if you want to hold and go home. I can always go back and forth in this line. So in red is what would be the convenience center site, roughly, uh, six acres, five point nine acres. Uh, in blue would be what we maintain as a, a public's wor- works, lay down yard and some other uses, or even redeveloping something else. Uh, the purple line just shows the greenway, the existing greenway. The green is the area that would stay undisturbed wooded area if we'd like to keep it that way. And then as part of this plan, and I probably shouldn't mention that earlier, the county is proffering to provide us with these two parcels, um, to have them added to the interlocal agreement we currently have for the Cedar Fork District Park property. So we would be able to add another six point nine acres of potential parking lands to our inventory, um, that, and Cedar Fork's right here. So this will all be interconnected here to Cedar Fork. And then what I will mention, and I probably shouldn't mention earlier, is just, just so that everybody knows the different zoning districts. Our parcel is zoned industrial management, which has a lot of opportunities for development. This parcel here, which is kind of, there's two parcels here, and this one is a little narrower, is zoned office institutional, which also has a lot of opportunity for development. And then this parcel, which is within the Cary jurisdiction, is recreational resources, which primarily sticks with recreation, but is pretty open for government building use. So there's some opportunity there as well. So the project status. We are, uh, the county has asked us to, you know, to come forward with this. They're, they're interested in developing the convenience center at this location. They're committed to doing that. I think this is one of their last locations to be built across the county. Um, if allowed to proceed, Wade County would absorb all costs pertaining to the development of the convenience center, including access to existing public works site. Uh, the county would be required to apply for a new special use permit because this is different, drastically different than the original approval that was granted by the council for that. And then U M O U would need to be executed, uh, to move forward with this project. Uh, we are recommending approval, uh, to be granted to the, to the couns- uh, to the county for the convenience center. Uh, Wade County is, like I said, committed to, to building the convenience center in Morrisville. They provided project management services for us for, uh, since twenty eighteen, uh, six years, seven years now. The town, we, we, we would retain ownership of the property. So this would be a land lease to the county, and they're looking for at least a forty year lease, uh, if they were to move forward with the project. Um, we would then also get six point nine acres of land provided to us in an interlo- interlocal agreements that would be attached to the Cedar Fork, uh, interlocal agreement. So that we would get that, um, property to, to use as part of the Cedar Fork property. And then, um, if you left it undisturbed and undeveloped, you'd have a total between the properties that we would get with, from the county as part of the ILA and the undisturbed property, uh, that would remain as part of our, our property, you'd have almost eleven and a half to twelve acres of land, undisturbed and, and forested, um, to remain. So I just thought I'd put that information out there. So I provided some council bullet points for discussion, and we're welcome to go through them and answer any questions that you have this evening.
Yeah, Satish, Councilmember Hender, and then Councilmember Scarlett Johnson, please.
Can you go back to the map, like, uh, the red line? Yeah, that's working. So the original plan was they would have, um, a driveway connection, right, to HSNC?
Excuse me, Mayor Potem.
Okay, the red line.
The red.
Oh.
Thank you.
The original agreement that we had was they would be having a driveway connection, right, where it says no driveway connection? And that would directly come across HSNC, and it will have a full moving intersection. Uh, and a traffic light. That was what we were promised, and that was what was told to HSNC, and that was what we had all planned for. So now, why are they backing off from that driveway connection? Is my question, because if anything happened in the middle, like an accident or something, you need an access to cut through it. Aviation is very important. And then the other thing is, usually between two parcels, we are two jurisdictions. You have a cross access. Do we have a cross access between our existing facility for public works to the convenience center?
So I'll answer your questions, well, uh, one by one, if it's okay, uh, Council.
All right.
Mayor Potem. So the agreement was that they would put the signal in if and when it was warranted. When the traffic study, the traffic impact analysis was performed, even with the public works facility there, it was short in warranting it. So the way we wrote the agreement was if, if and when the time came that the volume and so forth met the requirement, that they would be required to participate in their share of the, of the signal installation.
I, I get that, you know, like, but that doesn't necessarily mean to take out the driveway access. I I get that, you know, like, but that doesn't necessarily mean to take out the driveway access.
Right, so that that may be true, but with taking our project out of it, the warrants now are dropping further. And that and those were even done based on a twenty forty volume counts, year twenty forty. So even if we were to put the intersection back. Where you connected the our side and the HSNC side, the signal would would likely never, never come to fruition.
But that's.
With our with our us leaving the site.
This is a debate that I had with several people, that you can have on demand traffic lights. You can have all kinds of things. Just because D O T said it will not put um a regular traffic light, there are still many alternatives. And by Wake County going away and not giving a driveway intersection. It is going to cause more issues for us, because my fear is there will be a lot of people coming out of HSNC. And there will be a median divide in the middle. We we just went through the safety standards here. They'll try to take a U-turn or something. More accidents will happen. And and we are not helping. The whole slide that we did for safety and all those things is just not going to work. And we have seen July fourth, how people basically walk. That will continue and. It is a bad design for me.
Yeah, I I don't necessarily disagree with you. I will say that we're looking at different alternatives to bring folks. For example, one alternative we're looking at is potentially having people park at Cedar Fork and providing pedestrian access with a signal crossing to get people to HSNC. That's one thing we're looking at as part of the aviation sidewalk um alternative options. I will tell you that. Deleting the driveway. Should positively impact HSNC, because now there's no conflict coming from our side. It would only, so when there's events and things, there would never be anything coming from, if somebody, you know, because the solid waste facility is seven days a week. So people could, if there was still an in- entrance and exit there, there could be more conflict. It was not necessarily a bad thing. I think improving the D O T plan, because they they have changed the the design for the median right now. Maybe there's some alternatives that we can work with D T. And and unfortunately, what we realized recently. Uh, with some of our projects, that if we're working on a project on a D O T road, and even if we're willing to pay for a signal there. They're not allowing us to even apply for it anymore if it doesn't meet warrant.
Three weeks ago, I talked to Jerry Hopkins for almost twenty minutes. We were at Chimney Rock. Where, you know, they were doing it, and I talked about the same thing. And he was pretty receptive. Um, when we talked about on demand signal lights, because they don't fly the regular signal lights, because it takes away time for people to go from point A to point B. At HSNC, it's only during weekends or after hours. So. Like, this is a potential disaster to happen here, and and I want to avoid it. And, you know, with every means. I know, like, the solid waste people, like, you know, the convenience center is trying to push away because. They they feel that they will not get anything, uh, like a traffic light here. So use flush everything on AV- on international draft traffic. That itself could cause a lot of, uh, you know, clog right there. And you're focusing everything as a single point of failure. That's not good either.
Well, they have to demonstrate that. I mean, this is very conceptual, right? So they still, in order to move forward this, they still gotta come back to you with a special use permit, a new application. Uh, with revised tra- 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 transportation impact analysis. So all that would be flushed out. This is, this right now is a very conceptual uh site plan, just to see if there's an appetite to allow them to continue on the project.
Yeah, I I if we like. And I and I agree with the same thing. If we don't put our foot down, uh, it is never.
No, it's not.
So it's like, we have gone through that thing, you know, just do it, they'll come back, we'll have more opportunities, never happens. So do it now, do it correct. And the D O T should look into that on demand traffic lights. And that will be the best alternative here, because it has been used in other parts of Quan. I had talked with Giselle and it has been used. It's not like they are not familiar with it.
Okay.
That's all. Thank you.
I'm gonna take that now and then check. Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Schargi Johnson, please.
Yeah, thank you. Can you go to slide two? So on that, the six point nine three acre, is that just the red rectangle or red plus green?
Yes.
Okay, and then where you say, where is it? One point seven on the next slide, yeah. Uh, one point seven buildable acres. Where within those two parcels is the buildable acres?
So it's pretty much, and I'm gonna point with my pointer, it's pretty much everything in the that's does not have a color over it, plus what's in purple.
Okay.
Because all this is within the uh hundred year floodplain and it's not buildable, it's area.
Alright, and that, um. To then on the next slide with the wetland impact map?
Yes.
The the wetland, this map is, is this dotted purple line match up with. The green line on the next slide?
Yes, pretty much. Yes.
So, um, just, so from my understanding, with regards to, if you go back to the other slide, back to slide three. So where in reference to where the Wake County's building their convenience center? Where in reference to that was the new public works facility gonna be?
Uh, this might be, let me see if I show you here. So the the convenience center, when we were a combined project. Pretty much sat here on the right hand side, and we sat on the left hand side.
Okay, so I guess I.
It was roughly two thirds to one third. Um, roughly, that's maybe a little exaggerated.
Okay, so I probably should have known this, but this is redesigned. Their convenience center is redesigned since we're not.
Yeah, we we had a desire to to try to maintain as much as we could of our existing facility. As well as um, they had a desire to try to stay somewhat out of, as far away from the the floodplain. Because it be brings more challenges in construction, same challenge we had. So they were trying to bring it closer to aviation. Um, so that was kind of like, this is their concept. And they actually came back originally with something that was even, I'll say wider. And had more front than the aviation. And we told them they had to shrink it down some, as much as they thought they could, uh, and still making it work. So that's, this is what they've come back with.
Alright, so then when you say potential area for Town and Marshville, I guess I'm looking at slide seven now.
Yep.
Um. What does that mean? What is the potential?
Potential is probably a wrong word. So the bottom line is, if I was to just summarize this, we would lease them the red area for them to build the convenience center. And they would, it's it's an I L A, it's it's not really a land, it's kind of course, sort of like a land lease. They'd lease us the the potential area for Town and Marshville. They've agreed that they would let us use that property the same way we use Cedar Fork.
Okay.
And so they would a- amend the I L A to include the uh, what is it, six point nine acres of land.
Alright.
In that I L A.
Alright.
So it's roughly six for six, because it's about six acres, the red, and this is six point nine. I mean, roughly.
Alright, so to answer to me your questions with the council discussion, I mean, I would prefer to you to not develop that. Property, because we previously discussed, you know, wanting to, well, we created the um. Funds specifically for acquiring land. I mean, if we're able to lease this, then that's less acres we necessarily need to. Acquire for parks and green space. So I'd like for us to not develop this, keep it as is, especially since. I think that part is still wooded, that area?
All this, with the exception of the loo- the about about an acre where the convenience center occupies today, the rest of this is all wooded, that's right.
Right, so I'd like to. Uh, preserve that wooded area, plus you said, you know, have you guys mapped that area for the wetlands? Has there been a study?
We have not had the opportunity, no. But most of it's in the floodplain anyway, so it's not a lot of buildable space.
Okay. Um, one last question. What what is the county obligated to do? With when they abandon the existing convenience center? Will they be cleaning that up?
I think once, I think once we enter into the I L A, it'd probably be left for us to do something with it. Originally, we were thinking, this was when we had a combined project, that it would stay sort of as is, so we could have a laydown area in case of the storm, and we needed to use it for that. But I don't think we've reimagined what it could be used for at this point.
Have you done a like walkthrough to see what the uh. State of that property is, like behind? Like behind, I mean, we know what it looks like, where you drive up through.
Virgin wooded, marshy area.
I mean, is there gonna be any um hazard, site hazards?
I don't think so. Their solid waste facility was pretty well contained, and they didn't, they didn't take any hazardous chemicals there.
Okay.
It was pretty much only household goods. They didn't take construction materials either. It was a very limited uh capacity there. Um, so I I don't, I don't think that'd be the case.
Alright.
I'd use the facility.
Councilmember Schargi Johnson, followed by Councilmember Johnson, please.
Ah, the microphone seems to be working. I know. Okay. Um, thank you for bringing this um updated project to the council. Um, as we are being more agile and flexible on the way that we're using, um, you know, the opportunity. To repurpose some of these existing assets for the public works facility. There's a great value in not having to reconstruct. The storage facilities and, you know, such as also like for winter, the road salts and and other things. Can still be um stored on site, consequently saving us money for not having to rebuild that. Or lease another site, because we don't have enough room on the existing property that we just acquired.
Right.
I think that's important for folks to kind of realize is that that is a real value for everyone. Um, with that, um, the county seems to be very savvy in identifying the buildable land. Um, and kind of drawing their facility out. So that it's pretty tight on the buildable land and avoids the floodplain. When we were looking at flip flopping. I think we did not have as um clear definition with floodplain and buildable land, but what remains. When they offer us the use, which we probably means a lease of the potential area. There is not hardly any buildable land. It's mostly floodplains in the property that they are flip flopping.
So, if if I couldn't, I'm sorry, the the green area is generally buildable. Even though it it, because there are property, um, the way the floodplain, yeah, I'll try to go back. Might be helpful. So it's actually buildable pretty much almost to the property line, because we are allowed to build within the purple area. So it's, it's just an awkward shape now, and it is challenging because it does drop off elevation wise. So it it's buildable, but it is, it becomes the same challenge that we faced when we were actually building public works.
More risky, more litigation required.
I mean, for me, if we if we move forward this, I would recommend leaving that undisturbed wooded area, and that way you have a almost like a linear park that follows the greenway. Maybe we could even do more park things in there, passive park things, if we're gonna move on with something like this.
Are the number of services offered by this facility increased due to the fact that they now have more land to build?
Yes, it'll be a full service, solid waste, convenience center facility. I talked to the solid waste director today. It's gonna be very similar to the one on in Apex off of fifty five and five forty interchange. If you've been there, they offer the full gamut of services. Um, recycling metals, construction debris, pretty much, uh, I won't say anything, but anything that the county will accept, they're gonna.
So significant value for residents and the the area of the county for sure. What about access for fire and public safety? If there's one access point off of aviation, is there another um access point that would be made available? If there was a uh issue at the facility?
So that that is possible. Um, since this is very conceptual, we we haven't run it by all the departments yet. Um, there's always a possibility that fire requires some kind of fire access on some things other spot. Yeah, I'm not sure. We're not sure at this point. And they'd have to meet that, I mean, this, this, just because I'm showing you this doesn't mean this is the final, this is just to get the wheels turning on the thing.
Right, right. I mean, I understand the control point trying to, you know, lessen the impact in aviation, but I would still want a fire access point at some. Issue, because there's a lot of both residential communities and um. Commercial facilities where we only have the access point on Marshall Carpenter or aviation, and that. It, there's risk in when those are no longer available. You can't go into the back of the facility and enter that way. You have to go and kind of look for a a temporary location for access. And if I were to do it over again, I would suggest more, you know, access points. But um, the other thing related to HSNC. I was part of that discussion in length with um the original design, having a traffic signal that would be shared. I would request the consideration of a temporary, um, like. Off of fifty four, there is a traffic signal that is activated by the fire department and when they have runs, you know, or calls. That they have to do similar kind of thing that would be available if we have events along that stretch of road that will help mitigate and control. I know that we do have officers in place to help um both at the BAPs as well as HSNC when there's events, but. With the expansion of HSNC and people are really not cognizant of the plans that were approved by the town, that there is gonna be significant activity. At HSNC in the future, and we have to be mindful of that um activity and help everyone be successful. The convenience center with Wake County as well as um the HSNC. So I would be wanting to look at additional traffic controls. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson, followed by Councilmember Rao, please.
So Mark, I hear you with the um. Ground lease and the use of the other property. We'll have some kind of agreement on that. Was there ever a conversation about outright buying and swapping property and reconfiguring? Councilmember Johnson, excuse me.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, let me say that again. Okay, so I understand the um. Uh, the land lease and the use of the other property for us. Um, was there any conversation about actually buying outright or swapping properties? And reconfiguring all these properties?
Uh, to be honest with you, we we did not uh talk further than our original conversations that we would lease them uh right to our property. This property in orange came up because we're like, well, you know, you own this property, you know, you wanna use our property. What what can we do to to kind of? Let's have some negotiation. Um. I don't know if it's in our best interest. To s- to sell them our property or do some kind of swap. Because I think our property is more valuable and the lease is limited, and then if years from now we decide, hey, we wanna do something else here. We can use the property again. So I'm not, personally not sure if it's the best interest of ours to to do a swap. But uh, maybe selling it to them is another option. We didn't, we didn't talk about that exactly.
Okay, because before, this all made a lot more sense, because there was such a, you know, we. we were still gonna have a presence here, so this all kind of made sense. I'm, I really would like a better understanding about why we wouldn't, can I hear what you just said? That's a really good, that's a first step. Um, but, but I will tell you what I am concerned about is that um they would be leasing the property from us. So we would own the property, but they're putting hazardous materials on this property now. And so, do we really want, I don't, I don't know what that means down the road. Well, I don't know what that means forty years from now. So I need to have a really much better understanding of allowing somebody to bring in hazardous materials on property we're gonna own and then be responsible for in the future. So I don't, never. And then as far as the other property that, the, the potential use by us, I knew you just said something about what they each were zoned. I'd like to know what, what uses are allowed then. Um, I'm, I'm getting by just your quick description, but I'd like to know specifically what we can do with that, with that property. Because I don't want it, I, I, I do not want it left open space. I want, if it's available for us, I mean, I would like to keep it um and preserve it as much as possible. But I also would like to understand what the uses could be for us um to make Cedarport District Park more accessible. And, you know, to, to us and, and to what we're using it for. And I will tell you, July third is a prime example of how we need to rethink um how we go in and out of that facility, that, that park with eight thousand people.
Yeah, um, so the zoning information, I will have to provide that separately. It's a long, this isn't something I can just riddle off. Like, like there's a long list of uses for each one of those, so it's not, not this, I mean, I have it here, but I, it takes fifteen minutes to riddle off and go through each one, so I can provide that information. The orange property, just, we've been conceptualizing different things, including, you know, maybe adding a second ingress and egress for Cedar Fork through there, which is possible. You know, again, also potentially providing pedestrian access through the greenway and then up to aviation and then crossing. So there's, there's different things that we think could be advantageous to us grabbing the, the orange property.
Okay, and then, um, thank you. And then the last thing is the, Councilmember Bender asked this question, so that triggered me too. Um, I, I would hope eh the area that they are currently using for the convenience center, that they clean it up to some degree. Um, I, I don't, that little concern, that conversation concerned me a little bit. Um, again, there's not, yeah, they're not collecting hazardous waste there. It's all recycled materials. But um, I would hope that they clean it up.
I think if we were to move forward, we could probably put that as part of the agreement for them to maybe level it off.
And if I wanna leave that to us to have to deal with.
I think that's a, that's a fair request. I don't, I, I can't imagine saying no over a acre of just creating, yeah. I think we, if, if we wanna move forward, I think they would be amenable to that.
Okay, that's all I have, yeah.
Councilmember Rao, please.
Yeah, I also would be interested in just a list of the other uses of the property that was in the back of my mind. Just kind of where we can be innovative in terms of adding access to whatever we have there at Cedarport District Park. Would there be opportunities to partner with the county to fund certain aspects of that? And know that former Commissioner Hutchison talked about pocket parks, nature preserves, things like that. Um, that could be a good possible spot. I'm also in favor of um the traffic coffee measures, making sure that we're exploring options with HSNC. I think it's important to also, you know, uh, you keep them aware of what's going on with this process cause we don't want it to happen and then all of a sudden they think. I mean, I'm also concerned about people walking, even when we had these big events on the road and the side of the road. It's just not safe. And I think it's a dark, nighttime, dark, talk about safety concerns. Um, so I think that's really something that we need to, we need to address.
And, and just as a reminder, we do have uh, in this year's capital budget, we do have funding for, for sidewalk on aviation.
Okay.
So, so we're, we're exploring how best to exercise that and, and make it as safe and, and not, and also not build something that DOT is gonna come back and tear out, do it again. So we wanna come up with a good alternative that uh can stand the test of time and be used for various things. Uh, to get people in and out of that area.
Could you please put up the questions again?
Yeah, sure. I mean, we, we've all, we've kind of led into that. You know, I was trying to find out if there are any objections to allowing the county to develop the convenience center at this location. And I think, I think we've, you've, you've, I've done a great job at, you know, expressing your concerns and, and things that we need to address. Uh, I was, you know, we were curious if there's any development interests for the town property. It kind of seems like the um, the majority are interested possibly in, in leaving it um undisturbed. But I think there's still discussion about that as well.
I'll chime in with my thoughts. I don't have any objections to allowing the county to develop the convenience center at the new proposed location. I think that's gonna be good. Um, I want them to just always keep in mind that we're widening aviation, so make sure that they're far enough back and there's still room for a sidewalk on that side of the road too. I think that's important. Um, development interest for the town property, as you mentioned, investigating ingress and ingress for Cedarport District Park. A second entrance and exit would be great there. Um, we'd definitely like sidewalks there. If we're not gonna do a road, I'd like to have a greenway connection that goes out to aviation. So people don't have to go all the way out to make their way towards Cedar, towards HSNC, VFS, all that kind of stuff. Remaining public works facility, I'd like them to clean it up and make it an, a flat pad for us to do something with. Should be nice. Um, it's not on there, but working with HSNC to make sure we have some kind of traffic management that helps them, I think is important. If not a full service light, which it sounds like DOT is no longer interested unless there's a full warrant. The idea that uh Mayor Potom Garamella discussed with Secretary Hopkins, sounds great if they're willing to do that. Um, I think we should be willing to pay for that too. Um, if necessary, to make that uh a light that works during their large events. I think that's gonna be really important, and that'll help us during thirty July too. Um, I'm interested in adding the two county properties to our ILA. I think that'll give us control of those and the ability to do something there. Um, and I don't have any objections to entertain, entertaining a new MU, MOU to get this going.
I, I have a question. Did anybody feel drastically different than what the mayor said? I, I thought it almost felt like a summary, almost. I know there's some things that you still want me to bring back, informational wise, I'm not skipping that part, but I just wanted to get a general.
Okay, so um, we're doing a second round now, so Mayor Potom Garamella, followed by Councilmember Johnson. Microphone, sir.
What's it? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Oh, okay, sorry, sorry. Um, I, I'm, I, this is a question to, just, I need to know the answer to. I'm not, because it's a question that it's worthy of an answer. If we do not enter into an agreement, what is Wake County gonna do? Or did they plan on expanding current property?
If they, if we don't allow them to use the property, they're gonna find another property and move elsewhere.
So that they'll leave Morseville?
Likely, I mean, I, I think they'll try to find something in the general area, but I, I don't even know if there's land in Morseville that they could find for this. It's not gonna be that easy. Yeah, probably not. And since you asked that, frankly, I think if, if they had to buy this property, they would probably not do the project. Cause they're, it's really tight for them as it is now.
Okay, okay, that's good information. Thank you.
For, for me, like when you're talking about first allowing the new proposed location, I'm okay. But they have to have all the safety standards, the fire access or the secondary access. Those things are mandatory even before we go into these kind of.
So just to be a hundred percent clear, they would have to meet all of the regulatory requirements for this new proposal. Including fire, whatever would come out of the TIA adjustment, the special use permit conditions that are set by the council. They would have to meet all those in order to permit this project and come to construction. This is just right now, just very, just, this is generally what we'd like to do. It's almost like, I wanna call it napping sketches, it looks nicer than napping, but.
I, I get it, but I know we have in our UDO, we have changed the plan where it is like government services and others. You don't need to have cross access.
So, that was meant for, like on this property, that was meant for our public works. And that was meant for the accessory buildings of public works. It did not apply to the convenience center.
It, it does apply to the fire station though. Fire station and churches, like they, they use that.
Right, but we will, I'm sorry, we're not. We will have cross access to these, to the properties. There, there is gonna be cross access. That's why this, this connection will remain, so there'll be connection to both properties.
And what about this side?
On this side? Well, there's a, this is not, this, this part in green wouldn't be developed, so there's no, there wouldn't be cross access unless that got developed, then we'd make cross access. But they, they are required to meet the aesthetic requirements of our UDO. We've made some adjustments to allow public works for some portions of the facility that were not in public view. The convenience center is in public view, so they have to meet our UDO requirements.
And, and I keep on hearing about a, a walkway between Cedar Fork uh to HSNC and vice versa. Neither of the town or the HSNC has a MOU that they allow each one's facility. When they were doing Holy, they wanted Cedar Fork, the town said no. Okay, and for July fourth, they had somewhere else, but people still went into HSNC and there were a lot of emails sent out saying that wire is, you know, like what. So, so when you keep saying like you'll have a sidewalk and all those things, and there is traffic management, the TMP plan that the entire thing was done, like, you know, in big events, like the recent one, four or five police officers twenty, less than twelve hours before said, they're not coming. So, we cannot rely on those kind of factors which are happening. And, and it is not anything to, and again, I just want everyone to feel like there's not a special treatment to HSNC. It is aviation. We want aviation cleared, and more and more, the more aviation will be cleared if we clear this area. Is, is my thought process of for doing it because it will create a havoc later, that's.
Do you have what you need, sir?
Um, I think so. I just maybe wanted to ask, would you like me to come back with more information? Or should we come back with a, a MOU amendment to allow them to continue moving forward? And then we flush it out with uh, they have to come back with special use permit and other things that will come to council anyway. I'm just wondering if you'd like me to come back with more information before we come back with an MOU amendment? Uh, how you feel about that?
Deputy Town Manager, where do you guys wanna add anything?
I was just gonna say that it sounds from the comments that we have received, there's been a great conversation. You have raised really, really good questions. Um, I did not hear a resounding consent between the council to continue to move to yes. It sounds like we do have questions to be answered um that we need to come back to you. Because I think it's important for you to be able to have this information to reach a level of comfort before deciding to move forward. So if that is amenable to you, we will be more than happy to go back and provide answers to all those questions and come back to give you that level of comfort before you get to a yes. Does that work for the council? And it seems like Councilmember Scruggins Johnson may, maybe.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say that as far as scheduling goes, cause I, I, every time we meet, it kind of extends that process. If we meet after receiving the uh follow-up questions, kind of like with the budget and the FAQs, uh, we use that process, the next meeting that we talk about is the annual view. Um, and that way, if you just give us as an input the answers to these questions, I think it'll be more efficient and probably get us to the point that we need to get to in the timeframe that would be amenable to everyone.
Councilmember Johnson.
So, yes.
I may have misunderstood what you, what you're proposing, and maybe you're gonna say something about that.
No, no, go ahead.
Could you explain that one more time? Maybe everybody else caught it, but me, right?
So, so my favorite budget process on an annual basis, we have a lot of questions we're always asking staff and, and we can have like an FAQ, like a list of the questions and answer. And we use that as feedback, and then we build upon that during the meeting times. So we, and that's a public document, so anybody can see it. But I, I think this would, because we have so many questions, having an FAQ or a list of questions and responses would be an input to our next meeting, and then our next meeting would be the MOU discussion. So I don't wanna say, okay, you gathered all this information, then we read about it, then we um go back, and then we have an MOU. It just, I, I think that we would be best next to discuss the MOU itself, however, with the input.
No, we can do that. That's amenable to everybody. Happy to do that.
Exactly.
So, so when Councilmember Scruggins Johnson said that, that triggered me to say, we've already delayed them now um because we have changed our plans, which was the right thing for us to do. So, um, we are they in the timeframe, and what are they, are they, are they looking to move kind of quickly now or?
So they were hoping for a positive, relatively positive feedback. And they'd like to come bring the MOU, they'd like us to bring the MOU on the twelfth, and then uh, um, they would bring it to their county commission in a subsequent meeting, which is, I think, twentieth or something. I forget what their county commission meeting is. So that, they, that's what they're hopeful for there, would like to move on this project because if not, they really need to start looking for another property. They have, you know, their governing board is committed to building a convenience center, and this one's kind of the last one. And then, um, because we've changed course, they, they've lost some time. And they'd like us to be vacated by this, in December of twenty-six, which we, we would be.
So we have three weeks between the next meeting, so that's more than.
Yeah, we can answer these questions. This is not anything that we can't do.
Why don't we, why don't we go down this path? And then, I mean, we always preserve the right on the twelfth to say, I thought of, you know, I, I need a little more time. I thought of some more questions, but we can, we can head down that path and see where we land on the twelfth.
Can we get some head nods with everybody that we're kind of doing those in parallel, with the FAQ answers? But essentially give consensus that we're looking to partner with them, and we'll look at the MOU at that time. I think we're all comfortable with that, so thank you very much. Councilmember Scruggins Johnson sort of accelerated a little bit, but not lose any control. So now you all have your opportunity.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, so that is the end of our public work. Um, we're gonna go into a closed session. I wanna say thank you to everyone who watched tonight's meeting. We'll be meeting again in three weeks, on the twelfth. Um, thank you for participating and watching this meeting. Feel free to reach out to your town council, the town council at morsevillenc.gov at your convenience. At this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session for an economic development.
Mayor, yeah, Mayor Council pursuant to North Carolina statute one forty-three dot three, one eight dot eleven, eighty-four. A move that we go into session for economic development matter, discussion about economic development matter.
I have a microphone, Councilmember Johnson, and a second from Councilmember Scruggins Johnson. Uh, Councilmember Rao made the motion. Councilmember Scruggins Johnson made the second. All those in favor entering closed session at this time, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing now that carries university six zero, we are now in closed session. Please um clear the room of non-essential for this discussion. Thank you. So let's please all stay in the room. Power through. Please let us know when the mics are off and everything.